All right, Board of County Commissioners are now in session. First item on our agenda is Board of Commissioners invoices, Commissioners' report of credit applications. Is that my lead?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything out of the ordinary on there?
No. In fact, it-
Seems a little light.
Could be helpful if we just did a blanket approval on search and rescue mileage. If we could do that. Instead of bringing it before the board every time.
Okay.
Because the other time we pay it is when they get called out, and it's just a reimbursement of miles. So I don't know if there's a way we could make that an exception.
Okay.
If you want to think about that. Because I don't have an option to use a candidate.
We're sliding each page of these just off. You give this up?
Yep.
Okay, Ms. Chad, move that we approve the invoices and Commissioners' reports as presented.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have residency.
Ms. Chad, move that we approve the certificates of residency.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I had one for salaries here.
Payroll?
Payroll. Don't know if I left it on my desk or not.
Was it the payroll report?
Yeah.
Oh, grabbed it from your desk.
I can't see it here, so I had it when I was going through all the stuff. Oh, here it is.
She got a brain.
Secret Service.
Ms. Chad, move that we approve the payroll report as presented.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Kristi, you're up.
Crystal Plaza called for more. The first item I have for the board, I'm going to skip to the annual juvenile justice report just because that will be faster. This is just a compilation, and this one has Matt Wilson's signature. This is just an annual report that's due to Department of Juvenile Corrections for reporting monies in and out. And then if I can get that original back, Matt's going to come over. Jason also has to sign it. Matt will come over and get it from me and get Judge Call's signature on it, and then he will send it to State's Gerhardt and get the remaining signatures, and then he'll send the final report to Kristi and I.
Ms. Chairman, move that we approve and authorize signature on the juvenile justice annual financial report.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The next item I have for the board is to discuss the ARPA projects that have been approved by the board. I met with Brian and Debran through the reporting, and they need to get the board to give us or give me the recommendation on how to report on these items. What I did on the spreadsheet that you have is if there was an expenditure category, then I put what that would be, and then if it needed to come out of general county operations, then that's the reporting that we would use. So, for example, the E-Pole books, the fire suppression, those are all just going to be general county operations. But we think that the HVAC unit will fall under public health for clean air. Then we've got lighting projects, the ceilings, the rest of the stuff across the street at the assessor's office. Those really didn't have any categories that we thought they could fit into.
Not the DMV counter?
No, because that's really not doing anything for separation of space. It's just basically, because the space is already there. All it's doing is giving a spot for the customer.
But I thought it was like extended length, making the width.
If- Brian? So the Commissioner is questioning the DMV counter, and if that would allow for spacing. As we were looking through these expenditure category items, there really wasn't a spot that gave us that.
In spacing, we're talking about like the six feet, right?
Yeah, but they've really already got the six feet because they've got the Plexiglas right there.
Right.
So it's not really adding anything this way.
But we would. We'd add distance to give them room to ride so they're not reaching underneath the Plexiglas to ride on.
But that's just-
Are we going to keep the Plexiglas in there? Is that something we like? Was that there before the COVID, or was that new?
No.
I would like to take that down. I hate it.
So when you look at the expenditure categories, under public health, you have vaccination, testing, contact tracing, prevention in congregated areas, which only applies to jails, dense work sites, schools, which I'm not sure that that would qualify.
Dense work sites.
If you guys want me to use expenditure category 1.4, I can do so, and if something comes back, it's your decision.
It's ours.
That was what Brian and I came up with. But it's your guys' call. That's why we're here.
Well, that's what is it, 3,500?
Comment?
35,000.
35,000.
I think Kristi covered it. We're just looking at the-
So you don't think it falls in, based on this analysis?
Well, when we were discussing it, because we discussed the spacing of it, so we understood, like, it does add, you're saying if it adds any distance whatsoever, we can say that's trying to separate them further. But I know the Plexi, the glass in between was part of our analysis as well. If that's going away.
Well, but-
Well, if that's going away, that changes it.
But even with that, if I'm reaching underneath to sign something instead of having, instead of somebody being on that side of the counter and me being over here, and I'm reaching over here into their workspace, there's separation to me.
But the physical space has already been taken care of with Plexiglas. So because that's her place-
But it hasn't, because I reached underneath the Plexiglas into the other person's workspace. That's why I-
Like I said, if you would like me to change it to category 1.4, prevention in congregation settings, I can definitely do that.
Well, like I say-
The extension would make it so they wouldn't have to reach under the glass, or do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the whole purpose of doing it.
Or you remove the glass completely.
Well, it's not the whole purpose, because the other purpose is adjusting the counter and workspace for the employee.
No, the whole purpose of doing that is to say, follow me, my pattern here. The whole purpose of doing that is to separate our employee from the public.
To keep them putter apart.
Yes. But if we're not providing gloves so that they're reaching underneath there, that's the other option.
Okay, I'll change that to 1.4. The next, then we've got the cooler. We couldn't find where that for the corner of work. The two boilers. Originally, I thought the boilers might fall under that category, but it's really not changing any of the ductwork or clean air. So that's going to be general county operations. We need additional scope of work on the East Street entrance and 6th Street. We believe that part of that will fall under an expenditure category, under public safety, but without knowing the scope of the work for that, we couldn't put anything in that category. So that one was just left blank, essentially, until we have more information. The router upgrade falls under public safety. I believe that's what 3.5 is. Yeah.
Public infrastructure.
Public sector administrative needs is what that one is. Then, again, the remodel above elections. We need scope of work on that so that we can see what parts might qualify. So we need to get additional information on that project. The two barns, we put under tourism. The grandstand seating, we put under tourism. The wet cells, we put under the congregate settings. And we did the same with booking shower and the other showers. So that puts $952,592 within expenditure categories. But I believe once we get the scope of work on East entrance and 6th Street, and then also above elections, we'll be able to finish out the 1.2 that we need for those expenditure categories.
We only need 1.2 total?
With expenditure categories.
Yeah.
We needed $1,223,175.
Gotcha, thank you. Is this supposed to be all the approved things?
Yes.
Because I, my recollection is on the veterans thing. I know there was 20,000 for the boiler.
25,000 for the roof repair and 150 for the windows.
But there was something else in there.
Remember, we did a move of $30,000 for the foundation.
No, I didn't remember, so thank you.
Yes, that 30,000 we flipped.
Okay, thanks.
And put that in their budget. And that wouldn't have been an item that would have fallen in expenditure categories, so.
Thank you very much.
That was a good wash. And when you did ask if this was everything, this is everything that had not already been approved for reporting purposes.
Yeah.
Because we still have the million dollars that's going to the fire station. See, the forensic pathology of three and a half million. The safety and assessment center's completed. The 911 microwave is still undergo, or under, ongoing. The Bannock County event is still ongoing, and the sewer was completed, and the jail roof, we're waiting for one minor invoice. But those we already have reporting categories for. So, other than the DMV counter will now be 1.4. I just need to know if the other items are okay to report as presented.
Any questions?
Nope. I think so.
Thank you very much for all your hard work.
And then the next item that kind of goes with this list is we approved these as projects, but we really didn't set forth an action plan to get these started. There's a handful of these items that are going to need to go through procurement. And so I didn't know how you want to proceed. Can we just send this list out and say, go forth?
Yeah, I mean, part of it, we're going to have to have conversations with Dan.
Okay. Because Dan also has this list. He was given it when we had the meeting. So I don't know if you, anyways, we just need a plan so that we can get these moving forward sooner than later with the time restriction of spending the monies.
And that's, we should get information back from the Fair Board on what's going on down there a little bit, to the two buildings, and what direction they intend. But I was talking to Scott. I just said, tear down all the buildings that we need to tear down and get that done at one time, and open the space up.
Decide where and what and how.
It doesn't have to go back in the same footprint as we did before. And I think that we kind of made that mistake on this first one, of not looking to the future no more.
I would think that anything building-related, we give to Dan and say, start. Start. And then the rest of it just goes back to the various department heads to move on. That'd be my thought.
I do have tentatively marked for procurement, the fire suppression system, the HVAC unit, the two boilers, the two barns, which are already in process, I believe. We're going to probably have to look at those cameras and go through procurement on those, and then also to upgrade central. Those were the items that were fairly easy to pinpoint that would need procurement. The grandstand seating, they do that in-house. I don't think that'll have to go through procurement just simply because it's going to be parts.
No. Just materials.
Yeah.
That's what I would say. Let Dan take the building stuff and then department heads for everything else.
Will you or Brayden communicate that plan of action, or do you want me to do something? I just want to get these rolling sooner than later so that-
Brayden can follow up with it and do a communication.
So we can just work on it?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted a formal to tell people. Go.
I appreciate that.
Okay, that's all I have. And then I can ask Dan Kendall for clarification on the scope for those other two projects. Does that work?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are you here for Kristen? Is she showing up? I've heard she's next on the board, on my list.
Howl Jensen, Planning Director. You have before you a request for signature to use Chobik City Offices for our public, our comprehensive plan edit meetings, public meetings, et cetera. It's just a formality of this city's use policy to have signature in place.
Questions?
Nope. Nope. Ms. Chad, authorize, I'd move that we authorize signature on the form and go forth and do great things.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Where to sign that? All right. Looks like the second item is a discussion on fee waiver. Kristi, you can tell.
If Skylar would come meet with me. I have with me Skylar Allen from the Engineering Department, City of Pocatello. We currently have under construction a couple of facilities to expand the sewage treatment plant, which is in our jurisdiction. The city has requested a fee waiver for the building permit fee and for the plant review fee. It serves the general good, and it also opens up the opportunity for the respective jurisdictions to have conversation about fee waivers of all building permits between the two jurisdictions. For instance, when we do projects here at the courthouse or anything that's within the city boundaries, but owned by Bannock County, they require building permit fees, et cetera, so anyway.
I submit them all the time, and we've been held up because they didn't get our check. So they wouldn't give us a permit.
Size and scope, when it was asked, we said that we would go down the path with the Commission, put a request in front of you, and then also start a greater conversation for future projects.
I got a couple of people just walking behind.
Chase Clark, building official, behind me as well as Tristan Borkwin, Assistant Director. Anyway.
So my question on this is, so who's going to do the inspections?
We will.
So we'll have cost incurred with this?
For all intents and purposes, yes. For us, it's a formality because of the building code. Keller Engineering is the consultant, and when I have been on site for inspections, Keller has been on site as well, as well as special inspectors. To be quite honest-
And the city's paying for those inspectors?
Correct. That is correct. So we are, for all intents and purposes, tracking the inspection process. We have conversations on site with any potential concerns. Keller typically will express those to the contractor, et cetera, and have any infield corrections made, but anyway, yes.
And I agree. It's not a bad deal to have a conversation and work back and forth long as it's a two-way street, that it goes both ways.
Point noted.
You in charge of those projects, Skylar?
I am. I'm the project manager. The project question is the operations building for the wastewater pollution control.
So you're just adding on to it, or what are you doing?
We're constructing a new operations facility at the plant. It'll be approximately 6,000 square foot office building with some training space, storage spaces, and a new SCADA operations center.
What's the long-term outlook for the facility out there as a whole? Is there some expansion plans anytime soon?
We are currently in a construction project, making some modifications to some of the treatment processes. That's a separate project from the one we're discussing today.
I was just curious with the overall, what was going on out there totally, so.
John, any questions?
No.
Motion?
Ms. Chairman, I would move that we waive the fees for the City of Pocatello as requested for the sewage treatment plant.
We have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thanks, Skylar.
Thank you. Thank you. So Sean Williams.
He's going to fall under, him and the last item will both fall under the-
Executive session.
The executive session, okay. Hold on a minute. All right. Shanda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer. I have a procurement update for the board today. If we want to start with the first one, for Public Works Guardrails. This is a new project that we're just starting with Rodham Bridge and looking with Buddy on what that scope might be, replacing some, adding new to additional roads that I've received in the past. So we're just looking at different solicitation paths at the moment, but we plan to build something or piggyback off somebody, and we'll bring that before the board when it's ready.
I just want to give a quick shout-out to Buddy and the crew out there. I had a call from a citizen about a potential area for a guardrail, and they got on it and were able to include that in this bid. So I want to thank them for their speedy response to that.
Excellent, yeah. He's done a great bit of work for us. As we looked at different vendors and what we needed to do to go out to bid, Buddy was able to get all that research done for me, and then has even gone and gotten maps to then be able to help potential suppliers to know exactly what we were doing and where we were looking at. So yeah, I echo Commissioner Happy's done a great job in getting some of the initial work ready for this project. The second one, for the Commissioners' Forensics Pathology Building. We met with LCA on Monday, and after that meeting, preliminary design should be up for review in the middle of December for the board. The next one for the fairgrounds, the metal barns that we're looking at. As the Commissioners installed a new fairboard, we did kind of pause that project to get the fairboard in and allow them to review and look at it before any decisions were made. So that has been put on hold, but I anticipate some kind of direction coming out of their next year on December the 13th. The next one for Rodham Bridge Fuel. The first draft of the ITB has been sent to the evaluation team for review. This is quite a project, right, as we have never bid out bulk fuel for the county. So we're learning from all available sources that we can, but I feel we're putting together a good project, and that one is moving forward according to plan. The next one, for Emergency Services, the Lava Ranch project. We have been able to contact the state in getting additional direction as far as the prescription goes, and that prescription has been started. So we're moving along on that project as well. And then next one for the DV grant for the Family Specialist Services. That has been issued, a request for proposal on Monday that went live. We did send it out and invited seven local counseling offices to review and apply if they felt that that was a right fit for them, as well as post it on Bonfire for anybody else that might be interested in the area. And that is my update, unless the board has any further questions.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Looks like Ryan, Steve.
Good morning.
Morning.
Me.
Yeah, I think I'll turn the table over to Mr. Bell.
Sure. Okay. I've been working with Prosecutor Herzog and Chief Deputy Ryan on trying to recruit attorneys for the prosecutor's office. And despite every effort, you know, changing programs and whatnot, we've had very few applications come in. One application that did come in was for an individual who is from out of state, and in fact, actually from Canada. And as we've had some conversations with this individual, it appears that I initially had some concerns about, are we going to need to sponsor a visa? Is she going to be eligible to work in the United States? Is there going to be issues that way? But those have been resolved in my mind. She can come in on one of those NAFTA TN visas. We don't need to sponsor it. We don't need to pay any money for it. Basically, all we need to do is sign a letter saying that, you know, she's in a professional-type job, and that she's got a job offer, and then she'll present that at the border, and she'll be able to get right through with that TN visa. It would be a temporary visa for like three years, but as far as us as an employer is concerned, we have to do next to nothing to help her get that. The other concern is, you know, she's not, she doesn't, coming from out of state, she doesn't have a bar license for Idaho currently. So she wouldn't meet the requirements to be a senior prosecuting attorney because of that right now. But we do have some past practice of hiring people that are in every respect ready to, other than having that certification by passing the test, and we hire them as a staff attorney, pending them getting the certification, and then we would bump them up into a full attorney. And so that's kind of the plan that we've been working on, and I fully support what he's trying to do with this. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but that's kind of the direction we want. But before we do that, it's going to, it's a little different. So we wanted to bring it to your attention as we pursue this.
She's currently licensed in Michigan and has been practicing for seven, eight years. So she is an experienced lawyer in civil, in the civil world, but she seems very motivated to move to Pocatello and be a prosecutor. And we've talked to her a number of times, and she seems like she'd be a really good fit for the office. So we'd be hiring her to essentially do the same duties that judicial staff attorneys do, which would be, well, first of all, learning our system in our office and doing research and writing for licensed attorneys in our office. So she'd be able to make some, I think, significant contributions, even though she's not licensed here yet. She would either have to sit and pass the bar exam in July, or the bar has submitted a change to some of their rules and put it out to a vote with bar members, basically opening up reciprocity in a big way. So if that passes, it would go into effect probably in the spring, and she would, under the new, under the rule change, be able to just apply for reciprocity and not have to take the bar. take the bar. So that's kind of who she is and where she's at, and she's been working in Michigan, so she's very familiar with that NAFTA work visa, and I think she'd be a good addition. And the rate of pay would be comparable to what the staff, judicial staff attorneys are currently making that are licensed.
And I guess that's my question to start with. I mean, hiring somebody in your office, that's 100% you. I mean, I'm not gonna question, I don't have the knowledge or skills, but my, the compensation end of it, was what I was wondering about, is she'd come in at, like you say, a staff rate at this time, with the intention of raising her later on if she gets her license in the state of Idaho.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, minute. We're gonna start her out at the minimum step of other staff attorneys that, you know, have a license, because basically she's, she does, it's just not the Idaho.
So we're not, we're not compensating in any other manner? I mean, that, we wouldn't, somebody that is from Pocatello, Idaho, that come in as a staff?
No.
Yeah, correct.
And this will be Bennett County's first non-US citizen employee.
Could you go, Steve? Break a new ground.
Going to the history books that you get when you retire.
As long as she does the TN visa, then she'll be treated like a citizen.
Okay.
Who, you mentioned this reciprocity deal that looks like it might be coming along. So reciprocity with who? Canada?
Michigan.
Michigan.
Michigan, okay.
Yeah.
And so that means, so according to this new deal that's coming through, hopefully, if they pass the bar in Michigan, they're automatically licensed in Idaho, and it sounds like there's lots of other states possibly as well?
That's my impression, and I think the idea here is that, you know, the bar recognizes the difficulty especially government is facing in hiring attorneys, and a big hurdle to getting people here is, you know, well, you have to take the bar.
Right.
And a lot of people, I think, just go, well, you know, no thanks.
Right.
But if you meet the reciprocity requirements, and I'm not sure what they'd be, you have to be licensed to another state, I'm sure you'd have to have been a practicing attorney in good standing for a period of time, and then pass the, Idaho would do a background on you to make sure, you know, you meet that you're an ethical, honest person, yeah.
How often is the bar exam given here in Idaho?
Two times a year.
July and?
February.
Okay. And is her plan, is the plan then to have her take the bar exam in July?
Yes.
And do we have any kind of deadline on obtaining your license here for this? I mean, like, let's say she fails in July, she can try again in February.
Yep. And then it would be up to us to decide whether to keep her. If she didn't pass the July bar, you know, are we gonna keep her and let her take it again? And there's a, I mean, historically in this office, the prosecutors have hired people who have graduated from law school but not passed the bar, and left them work under a limited license, which is no longer in existence, but, and then it was up to the elected whether or not, you know, if you failed the bar, you could stay and take it again, keep your employment and take it again.
Okay.
What problem does this solve for you? If she can't actually work and prosecute cases, what does, how does she help you?
Well, she can, she can do research and writing. Like, if I had a brief I was working on, I can give her all of the file and tell her what I want, and she can do all the research and writing, and then just leave the signature blank for me to sign. So she, she just can't appear in court. But in that time period between her showing up and passing the bar, she'll be, you know, when she does pass the bar or get reciprocity, she'll understand the system here by that point. So she'll kind of be trained up and ready to go and be very familiar with kind of how, what we do. So it's kind of a long game. But, I mean, you know, if you had other applicants that were ready to go, it'd be a different deal, but we're looking at kind of the long game.
And quick clarification on the pay. Currently licensed staff attorneys are paid grade 16, which is the same as our deputy prosecutor attorneys. So this position is budgeted at a Step 1 grade 16. So when she gets her license, she may or may not get a raise. Or, I mean, or treated like a licensed, but not, so is she gonna come in at a 16, licensed, or is she gonna come in at?
I would.
Unlicensed.
I've discussed with her 70, so.
Okay, that's what the position's budgeted for, so there will be no guaranteed raise if she passes the bar.
Unless we promote her to a senior deputy.
If you have that line item available, which I don't know if you do. I'd have to look at that.
That's what we posted it originally as.
Was it senior?
Yeah, we're gonna have plenty, we're gonna have plenty of open spots.
Zoe left last month, Dave is leaving this month, we have, I mean.
Well, you can have money left over, but if you don't have a senior position available, you can't put her in that line unless the Commissioner approves that. I, I just need to look. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
That pay, and, and we can talk about that kind of stuff later. Just don't promise a senior position until I look.
Okay. We haven't.
And one other.
There's been a lot of contingencies in our discussions with her.
And the point of clarification, too, is we will need to draft a appointment letter that looks a little different than normal to satisfy what we need, she'll need for the visa. It's, it's not gonna say anything crazy in there, but it's gonna be different from a normal template, but I, we've got a draft in progress. We can have, they've reviewed it, so.
Well, and you brought up past practice, and it wasn't in this office.
Right.
And, and I didn't turn out the best, the way I remember it, so.
And even if the concerns in this fiscal year without line item, and let's say she does pass the bar in July, it's not gonna be until October, right, that she gets sworn in?
We know whether or not she's.
Yeah, so we'll be able to address that.
Perfect.
If she passes it out there, so.
That is the claim.
Because they take it in July, and then they don't get the results until, usually is it September, if I remember?
Yeah.
And then they get, don't get sworn in until October, so that'll put us in the next fiscal year, so that should be able to be addressed there.
Cool. We'll address that through the budget process.
Unless she, there's reciprocity.
Right.
Then that would shorten, shorten things, but.
We'll cross that bridge a little bit there.
This reciprocity deal, you think next spring we're gonna find out if this is gonna go through?
Well, I think we'll know for then whether it passed. Then I think the Supreme Court has to approve the change and, and, you know, enact it sometime in the spring.
So I spoke with the admissions director about that very topic. She was confident that it will pass, because everybody outside of Boise wants it to pass. All the attorneys outside of Boise want it to pass, so she's confident it will pass, and then they have to have the Supreme Court enact it, which she was gonna encourage the Supreme Court to do it as quickly as possible, so she said it was likely the spring. Whatever spring means, but.
March 21st is not the first day.
So the reciprocity would be good, because that would really shorten the timeline compared to where it sits today.
So I'm, I'm good. We're not expending extra funds, we're not promising anything in the future, so, and it's gonna be your employee. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Go forth, do great thing.
Okay. Will do.
Want to go later?
Yeah.
All right, Braden?
Braden Clayson, Chief of Staff. Before you today, I just have an updated contract for an inadvent case surrounding the Downer Funeral Home. A gentleman that is serving as current legal counsel had submitted a contract that we had edits, or had suggested edits on, and he was just looking to get a signature today on that.
Questions?
No. Nope. Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the contract as presented.
Motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Jason, up here. All right. Looks like we need to have a discussion on taxes.
Do you want to go into executive session first, or do you want to wait?
Do we need to go into executive session?
We have two things.
So I just wasn't sure on the one conversation, if it needed to be one of them, will need to be.
Okay. Sean, come on up.
Okay. Thanks for having me. I have a couple plans here, I was just gonna hand a couple of you, if that's okay. I'll refer you on them. I, I flipped them open funny, because the page, the page I want to have you look at the most, so the other ones, you can go to.
What website did you watch on?
Sorry?
What website?
It's just regis.com, and if you can click about us, I just want to refer to that. And then, other than that, if you guys aren't familiar with the Convergys Building, most people are in town?
They're on.
Okay, good. I don't need a, this has pictures of everything through there, so, okay. So I'm the young guy that bought that, so I got myself probably over my head with it, but I, I bought it in 2019. I did it with two, well, that year I was starting a business with two business partners, because I had traveled, and we just had our, my wife was pregnant with our fourth child, and I wanted to stop traveling. That business didn't work, and the two business partners I had, and I bought out right as COVID was happening, and then sadly, I think everybody in Pocatello, they decided, they had 20 years left in their, in their lease, all renewals 20-something, and then they took a, they actually kept saying they were gonna stay all the way through 20, like, partway through 2021, they kept saying they were gonna try to come back after COVID, and then they decided to shut down like 50% of their locations, which before I bought it, they had DirecTV in there, and then they lost DirecTV, and they had thought about downsizing, but then before I bought it, they had onboarded a few health insurance companies that filled up, because they, they dropped, they had 300 employees in there, and about 200 were DirecTV. Anyone knows, a lot of people had worked for them, but then they had built back up to about 300 employees by the time I bought it, which I think was sad that 300 jobs left, you know, that location in downtown. And even when I bought it, actually, they gave me a, there was a, an article that the city did about renewing downtown, and it had this building as the example of renewing, because in 2018, they finished a remodel, where they spent almost $2 million on the building remodeling it all, so it's a very nice building. I mean, you walked through it, at that point, they redid HVAC, like, and all their data and all their ceiling tiles and the flooring, and everything feels nice, and that's why when I bought it, I thought they'd be there for a while, but like I said, it's gone empty the last two years. I set a plan, like a two-year plan, because when I listed with the ZBZ, I said it could take up to two years to lease or sell. Originally, we were trying to lease it, I think that's at some point, you might have, somebody from the county went over there with the ZBZ, they thought it'd be a good fit to county. Really, what the ZBZ has said is there's somebody, really, they want to try to get like downtown to where more people are over there, is what they're, you know, and, anyway, we've had, I feel like quite a bit of people look, but in the last little bit, I feel like that's dried up a little bit, and so the plan as of now is to start my, is just to generate some income off the building and start some businesses on my own, since I haven't been able to lease or sell the building. Sadly, the mark, there's just not a lot of buyers, and leasing, we've had, I feel like, a dozen people close, but no one pulled the trigger, you know? So what I've seen, Ted Booth has helped me design some shared office space, and the reason that this website he asked to pull up is I, there is a lot of shared office space in town, but there's no big, big, well-known name brands of office space, like, if you were to go to Boise or any other bigger cities, there's gonna be a WeWork, or one of the most well-known is Regis, they've been around the longest, over 30 years, they have 3,000 locations throughout the world. They're, they're probably the biggest player in this space, and I was able to put together a contract with them. I actually don't think the contract's great in my favor, but I feel like if there's a chance for it to succeed, it would be doing shared office space with the Regis. So, anyway, they, they've been around for a while, I feel like they could pull people into downtown that are work at home to have their office. Their, their business model is they have offices as small as 50 square feet for people who, you know, anywhere from that to a couple hundred square feet. And so, but what I've run into is, because my, my payment jumped, so I've been paying $30,000 a month on the payment and expenses, taxes, insurance, utilities, and the interest rate jumped, so now it's 10,000 bucks more. The bank, when that did jump five months ago, they gave me six months of interest-only payments, and I asked the ZBZ to push hard to see if they could lease it or sell it over the last six months. That's coming to an end, so I'm, luckily, I can work hard and generate income, so I spend, this last year, I spent most of my weeks, about all the year, out of state, working to make money to pay the payments, and which I plan on doing until I have a lease, I can, I can make the money to make the payments. It just, I just don't get to see my kids. So the problem that I'm running into and why I'm asking for a tax break is, my solution I've come up with is to, like I said, do these businesses, but they require me to pay for the build-out, and so it'll be about a half a million dollar build-out for the shared office space, and to draw people to come to downtown, I'm trying to, the plan is to do amenities with it, and so the plan is to start a gym. I have a video I can show, but the gym, there's an unfinished place in the basement, if you've been there, that has concrete walls, and there's actually been, there's some really cool gyms that I've been to, you wouldn't believe it, but that are pretty amazing in basement places or with concrete walls, they feel very modern, is to start a gym. The guys, there's, there's a company that started called Fit One, that's in Rexburg-Rigby, and they're building one in Twin Falls. I work with the guy that's owner of that. They, they don't want to lease, because they don't like the downtown location, but he's, I'm gonna build the model after that gym. So it'll have a gym and a shared office space, and then a daycare, and the plan is those three will draw people to downtown so that they can have a place where they can work out, work for the day, and have their kids watched if needed. And so, but none of these businesses are, would be signing a lease, they would all be built by me, and the shared office space will be managed by Regis. They do all the sales, they hire the employees, that, I just have to do the build-out. And so when I look at the financial burden that doing the build-out, though, it's between making the payment and doing the building and getting them off the ground, like even this last year, making the payment, I felt bad, because the landscaping started looking a little bit bad, because I was gone all year, and I'd come back, and our sprinkler system had some problems, and it like got kind of a mess, because I wasn't there, and so just getting a, a break on taxes while I'm getting the build-out done will help me maintain the building, so it looks nice, because it's a very nice building, and I don't want it to go into disarray, and really, to afford putting together a build-out, the struggle is, is I have to take debt to do the build-out, and the interest rates are so high, and my interest rate, originally, when I bought the building, was not supposed to renew at this time, but they kind of swung that on me last minute, where instead of locking for 10 years, they only locked for three, so my interest rate has, like I said, close to tripled. So I, like I said, this is the first time I've had to sit in a scenario like this, so I don't know how this usually goes. I, I've had some thoughts about how, how we could do a tax break, where if I could get the businesses up and running, if whatever percentage of the loan I can pay, that percentage of taxes I can pay for a couple of taxes I can pay for a couple of years. Something just to help the building not go into a big.
I can just tell you that we're not going to make a decision today.
Yeah.
We don't have any numbers before us at all.
Okay.
And I, and I don't make a decision the first time I hear numbers.
Okay.
That's the way I feel.
Okay.
There's got to be, I got to know what we're talking about here.
Okay.
Not just, I'd like this. So are you in tax deed anywhere?
Yeah, they're current.
You're current, okay.
Yeah.
So it's a little bit different discussion. Just to be honest with you, I don't know why everybody else in Bennett County should be paying their taxes to subsidize you not paying taxes. So without numbers, I, I can't even start to talk about a decision because, I don't know, it's an unknown to me.
Yeah.
What I, I called Mr. ZB last night to talk to him about the property and.
Jared or Don?
I talked to Don.
Okay.
And talked to him about your plan and what he thought, and, and he thought it was a decent plan. He expressed some concern about being able to rent out, which I'm sure he's talked to you about, the capacity. But he, he talked about a potential plan that, that could work for doing what you're asking. And so I agree with Commissioner Moser, without any, without any plans, it's, it's hard to give you a decision, but I would be willing to entertain something to help. Because again, if we can help spur economic development and something that's good for the county as well as you, then I'm willing to entertain that, so.
And my thought is it's just something that would be good for the city and help downtown continue to have employees go down there and have a, a good building where people go to and work and help outside of town. But as it is, it's, it is, as it stays in empty, it gets, like I said, kind of like the landscaping this summer.
It deteriorates. Anytime a building's not occupied, it deteriorates.
Yeah, exactly.
Plainly so.
Yeah, which is sad because it's a nice building, you know? And for me, more sad because it's just working to keep it afloat. So, anyway, I tried to create a plan. Ultimately, the best, I mean, it would have been great if you guys had had interest in leasing it, and I think, I mean, I think it'd be great, it's a great spot for anybody who would use it. We just haven't had anybody jump on it, and I've had to decide how long to wait. Don originally advised two years, spend two years, coming up on two years, so. And at this point, I just said, hey, I need, I need to start making a, a plan of action if, if it doesn't for the next couple of years. I wouldn't, the, the shared office space will take about 8,000 square feet of the main floor, so there's still, the rest of the building is still, you know, 35,000 square feet that's left. So I would still be attempting to lease it, is just using some of the building to generate some income to help cover the losses. And the problem is, is just the expense.
We understand that. John, anything?
Not at this time.
What numbers would you need for me to?
Well, how much are you asking for? Like, there's a certain, you're saying you want a break on the taxes, how much are the taxes?
The, the taxes are, I think they're exactly, but they're 53,000 a year, 55,000 a year.
Yeah, well, you need to go in and talk to the treasurer's office. We need to have the numbers.
Okay.
That needs to be presented for, before us, 100%, before we, Alex said, it's an unknown to me.
Okay.
And, and you can tell me something, but you don't know for sure either.
Yeah.
Until I have.
I don't know if they changed it this year, but yeah, it's.
You should be getting your notice here shortly.
Yeah.
But that's the information that I can't make a decision. And this Tuesday's generally not the meeting that we have a discussion about these kind of things.
Well, thanks for sitting and meeting.
And so.
Yeah, just bring us a plan and what you're asking for, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
So we're willing to look, how's that?
Can I tell you my plan, and then you guys can think about it before I present it?
No, no. This is a business meeting, not a work meeting.
Okay.
And so.
Just to something printed out.
So if you want to do a business right now, just definitely no.
Okay.
So I guess it's up to you. What do you want to say? So, all right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Clark, Tracy? Go ahead and introduce yourself, and then we'll turn some time over to the treasurer's office.
I'm Tracy Wells.
Okay. I had your request today.
Um, to, I don't know what, what options are available to me, actually, but.
Sorry. She might be done on the other side. All right, she has your options.
Yeah.
I thought she was supposed to present what she.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't.
It's thanks to the commissioners what you're here for.
Okay, I was, I was asking for, I'm not sure, not exactly a waiver, because I'd like to pay my taxes. I got myself in a situation, my taxes went from a couple hundred bucks a year to $2,000 a year. I inherited my little brother's twin daughters. And when COVID closed schools down, I, I quit working to homeschool them, and I just had not been able to catch up on my bills. So I'd like to pay my taxes. I, I don't know if there's a program available. I was trying to look for one, I didn't actually get a hear from these guys what my options were available. I would just like to have some kind of plan to get it caught up and not go into tax deed.
Okay. Thank you.
So on this parcel, it was, it's called the parent parcel, and then it was split. So then two parcels went off the map. The taxes were not paid before it was split, so it's got 2018 and 19 taxes on it that are attached to both of the new parcels and the old parcel. So I, I feel like hers on the 2018s and 19s should not be attached to her parcel. She didn't acquire this till 2020 and the 19. So they did not go through a title company to do the proper steps to get that taken care of as well. So my, my recommendation is to, would be take off the 2018 and 2019 taxes and slowly put them on to the previous owner who has the other parcel. And that would just be attached to his, he should have been responsible for. I can, he's un, I can, okay, you know, been trying for two years.
So just to explain this just a little bit better. So they'll be attached to the parent, or?
We would attach the parent parcel just to Mr. Castona's new parcel instead of, we would take them off of hers. So that would take two years of taxes off of her tax bill. That really should not be.
So if, if they don't get paid, we, we would take the other property?
We will go into tax deed in January, and we would take hers and the other one, because they're, they're all attached.
Under the current scenario, but if we move this for those earlier taxes, we're just talking about the other parcel.
That, that's my question is, because I don't want to come back in January and say, okay, now we're going to take your property or whatever. I want that separated from the two.
Yes.
Okay.
And I've talked with legal, and I've talked to the State Tax Commission as well. And they've gone through it all. So they agree that we could do that if we live there.
And actually, I have no problem doing that, the 18 and 19, they weren't your obligation. If you would have followed proper procedures, that would have been noticed. And so I'd just caution you in the future that you better, better beware of that. So we take them two away, then you're still behind, you know, on 20?
2020s are paid. With the split, it just worked out, so hers 2020s are done. She's got a small portion on 2021s, all 2022s, and now 2023s.
So this will take her out of tax deed?
Yes.
For how long?
Well, essentially, she'll have one more year to pay $65 to keep out of tax.
For 2021?
For 2021s.
So, I mean, maybe today she could pay that, and then that puts it two years away before we go into tax deed?
Questions?
No, that's the path.
So that's what I'd say that we would do, is we would take the other taxes for 18 and 19, take them off of your property, attach them to the other property. You have an obligation of $64 or whatever that needs to be paid up shortly. That'll keep you out of tax deed for a couple of years.
Well, she would have to pay the 20, she's not in jeopardy right now.
Yeah.
She will have a full year to keep out a tax deed with only $65 to be paid. That's not ideal, though. You'd want, because in that next year, you're, you're going to have like $1,300 due.
I think I qualify for a program that'll cash me all the way up with two years.
With your, with your bank?
They didn't know exactly how much it was going to cost, so.
Is that the one with your bank?
No, with the Housing Association.
Oh, yeah. So they contacted me. They can't, they, they're unable to help her because of the 18s and 19s right now.
Okay. So you got a year anyway after that. If we take this away, you have a year to catch up, which we're not giving you a break, we're just taking those that were owed by somebody else off of your plate. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we remove the 2018 and 2019 taxes from parcel RPPOC 435400. Do I need to say specifically the parent property on that to?
Is that? Zero, zero, zero.
That is it?
Zero, zero is the parent.
Okay, I wasn't sure about the zero, 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 one, so, okay.
Zero, one is hers.
Okay, good. All right, I did it right then.
All right, we have motion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Get caught up.